Good afternoon. I'm going to call us into session. It is November 1st of 2022, and we are scheduled for a regular city council meeting today. Prior to that, we will go into executive session. And so we will hold executive session for the purpose of consulting with the city staff regarding the following: pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement, and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. So we will be in recess and anticipate beginning our regular council meeting at 2:00 P.M. All right, good afternoon. It is 10 after 2:00 on November 1st of 2022, and we are back from executive session, and we are moving into our regular session. And prior to beginning our meeting, we have the honor of having the Honorable Paul Carpenter with the First Christian Church here for our prayer this afternoon. You will forgive him, he is an Aggie, I've learned today. But if you all arise and remain standing for our pledges by Mayor Protem after that, and we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you, Pastor.
You can forgive me to pray first. Let us pray. Holy Father, it is in the name of your Son Jesus that we gather. I pray today for all people in this room, regardless of their walk with you, we pray that we would each receive blessings. Specifically, Lord, for those making decisions, we pray that your Holy Spirit would entrust to those decisions and decision-making processes with wisdom, cool heads, strong hearts.
We pray, Lord, that you would bring unity to our city, and also that we would take time today to count our blessings, what an honor and joy it is to live in this great city and this part of the state. We ask, Father, for forgiveness for our sins, we pray for guidance in all things, and for your peace to rule in our town. In Jesus' name, amen.
Would you please join us as we praise to the United States of Texas land? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the E.T.S., one state under God, one and invisible.
All right, at this time, we will have citizen comments. According to the city council rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before a regular meeting regarding any matter that is posted on the agenda shall complete the sign-up form provided, and then comments will be allowed when you step forward. If you'll please give your name and your address, and then there's a reminder, you will have three minutes to make any comments that you have. If you're commenting specifically on an agenda item, please let us know what that agenda item is. Our first person is Paulina Madrid.
Good afternoon. My name's Paulina Madrid. I'm the owner of Tipsy's, and my address is 5001 Avenue Q, Suite A. And today I'm here because I'm asking to be granted a separation variance from Hodges Elementary. This will be my third time that I'm here. We have opened, we've been open about a month. Seventy percent of our customers leave once they come in and they find out we do not serve alcohol. We do have mariachis, we do have the coreico dance, late girls there. I mean, it's really good, nice, good environment. Our hours have changed, but once the customer asks, "Oh, do you have margaritas?" No. "Do you have beer?" No. They wonder why, because we're sandwiched between all these other bars. We are the furthest from Hodges Elementary. We do offer, our hours have changed. At first, it was 7:00 to 2:00 a.m., but now they're Tuesday through Thursday from 11:00 to 11:00, Saturday from 1:00 p.m. to 12:00, Sunday from 1:00 to 8:00. Due to the sales, we only have three employees. I'm working 110 hours a week trying to live here, and I'm going to fail if I cannot, you know, move forward. Also, we offer free meals to the children from 4:00 to 6:00. It's always been that way. Discounts to senior citizens, LISD, and to public servants. Another thing is, you know, we're just a family-owned restaurant. We are a full restaurant. There is no room to dance, there's no room to stand around. The fire marshals know that, the city knows that. And we're just a family-owned restaurant that's just trying to be successful. I just graduated with an Associate's of Applied Science Culinary Arts. I am an LVN. My dream changed all of a sudden when I lost my daughter to suicide. I do give to the community awareness of suicide. Every year, we gather things in honor of my daughter, Quince. We gather school supplies, gifts for Christmas. I pass out flowers for Mother's Day every year that United and House of Flower will donate to me. And, you know, I really, really, really am asking for you guys to look at the pictures I submitted on page four. I'm 497 feet away from Hodges Elementary. I am the furthest. If a child was to come out and come to my restaurant, I would not serve him alcohol. I would probably feed him and then call the police, let them know that I have a child that belongs to somebody that's lost. And if you can see my restaurant, it's not just a hole, not just an ugly restaurant. We put in a whole bunch of work, and I'm here today to ask for you guys to please reconsider and grant me the separation variance that I've been asking for since the beginning of the year.
Thank you, Ms. Madrid.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Rob Nance, Lubbock ISD, here on the same issue, issue 6.3 on the agenda. I know you've received, I hope you've received Dr. Rollo's email or letter opposing the permit for alcohol at this location, which you can't see, and again, not trying to discredit or discourage any small business, but to paint you a picture of what the situation is in reality, you come out the front door of Hodges, and out the front door looking west, you see the shopping center in question. They are on the far side of the shopping center, but Avenue P is a single street that separates the shopping center from Hodges Elementary School. The only parking lot is a parking lot that's just down, further down south on Avenue P. This road could be used by both traffic leaving, and this is also in operation while our kids are there. We could have traffic exiting onto Avenue P at that same time. I do believe it's in with the 300 feet when I measured it. I know she says otherwise, but I had less than 250 from the edge of our property to a door to Tipsy's. Again, we're here to protect the safety of our students, our parents, and getting kids to school, so, you know, we have some issues other than, aside from that, just trash, other things that, you know, you can imagine go with more activity in that bar. So from Lubbock ISD's perspective, we would suggest and recommend that you oppose the request for alcohol sales at this location.
Thank you, Rob. All right, we will next move to Agenda Item 4.0, as that was the last of the citizen comments. Agenda Item 4.1 is the minutes, September 20th of 2022, special city council meeting with EUB, as well as the October 11th, 2022, regular city council meeting. If I have a motion to approve those minutes? Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia, I have a second. All right, thank you. Dr. Wilson, a motion and a second, all in favor of approval of Agenda Item 4.1, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed by like sign? All right, approval of those minutes carries 7-0. All right, we will next move to the consent agenda. That is Items 5.1 through 5.2. As there are no pulls from this consent agenda, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.2?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Joy, Mr. Massengill, a motion and a second to approve of Agenda Items 5.1 through 5.2. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed by like sign? All right, motion to approve those consent agenda items carries 7-0. We will next move to our regular agenda, and we will begin with Agenda Item 6.1. This is the second reading of, I believe, what was heard last week on the 7411 Milwaukee Avenue, 76th Street and East Milwaukee Avenue. I believe this was the coffee shop. Do we have a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.1?
Yes, they do.
All right, thank you. I have a motion and a second. All right, is there any further discussion, or do we like to open up this to more discussion on Agenda Item 6.1?
We discussed, that's right, we discussed this at length at the last meeting. I'm still of the opinion this is not a restaurant, and they should not have to do a zone change, maybe an appearance before ZBA for a special exception for the window, but this is not, this should not be a C4 zone case. I know that's contrary to the planning department, but I believe after the last hearing when we asked about definition of restaurant, it doesn't fit a restaurant. That's what C4 covers as a restaurant. This is not a restaurant. I would think there is some way that the planning department could figure this out, but I've not heard anything new from them, so I assume they're still taking the position that he cannot, in this business, have a, basically what's a freestanding coffee shop where nobody comes inside, people go through the drive-through, you don't cook, you have packaged items that go into a microwave, and so it's not a restaurant. And I cannot imagine why the planning department can't work this out, but until they do, I will still be opposed to it because it's a C4, it's in the middle of a block, which is not appropriate, and so I will be voting against it again because I know that it is not a restaurant.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Is there any other discussion on the Agenda Item 6.1? All right, seeing none, I have a motion and a second, all in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.1, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries 4 to 3. All right, we will next move, thank you, sir, appreciate it, next move to Agenda Item 6.2. This is to consider a resolution approving and granting a variance of the 300-foot minimum distance at 3121 34th Street for alcoholic beverage permit for Frost Brew House.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As you stated, this is a request to vary the separation requirement for a business to obtain a TAVC license. It is for Frost Brew House located at 3121 34th Street. They are within 300 feet of Mrs. O's Daycare. They are proposing to open a brew pub. They received zoning board of adjustment approval for a brew pub as a conditional use in February of 2021. They also received ZBA approval to allow a brew pub within 300 feet of residential property in February of 2021. They are proposing a wine and beer retailer's license as well as a brew pub license. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Mr. McBrayer?
Yes, if I had an aerial view, that would be helpful. It is the third tenant space from the western property line.
Third from the west, okay.
It is next to VSO's African Bar and Restaurant at 3131 34th, as well as Woody's Brick Heaven Pizza and Grill at 3135. Those are the two tenant spaces west of them. Both of them received approval from council for a separation variance as well.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
The last thing you indicated before Councilman McBrayer asked this question, you indicated that the allowance would be for the resale or retail of beer, alcohol, and tell me what you were saying, and brewing.
There'll be a brew pub, so they're required to brew beer on the premise, and they can have a restaurant in addition to that. The licenses with TAVC they are applying for will allow them to sell beer and wine. That's it.
Only on the premises? I mean, to be consumed on the premises or come and go?
Both, to be consumed on the premise as well as packaged and taken with them.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
It'll be replacing another brew house that was there, or I think it was Craft-
Craft House.
Yeah, Craft House. So, you know, I think the neighborhood is accustomed or used to that, and it attracts a lot of different people, so I think it's a positive thing. And I do support small businesses.
Kristin, were there any objections from Mrs. O's or anything on that from those groups, Young Life or Mrs. O's?
So, we only notified Mrs. O's. Measuring for churches is a little different. It is measured door-to-door while traveling along the legal pedestrian path, so the churches are not within 300 feet when measured in that manner. Schools and daycares are property line to property line. Mrs. O's, we did send them a letter October 11th, and we did not receive a response. The applicant indicated they had already been in contact with Mrs. O's and that they were in support. We have one of the co-owners of Mrs. O's with us. I don't know if that helps any. They have one of the co-owners of Mrs. O's here, if you have questions.
Is that gentleman on the back row? Is there any objection from Mrs. O's?
No, sir.
Does anybody have any other questions of Ms. Sager? Sorry, Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Back row.
Come on up.
Come on in, come on in.
Mario Sanabon, part-owner of Mrs. O's, and we have no objections with your business.
Okay, I just couldn't see. I know where Mrs. O's is, it's right next to the Verizon store.
Yes, ma'am.
Mario used to be with the Lubbock Police Department, if you don't remember him. He was on the cover of their calendars and some things like that back in the day. All right, is our motion to approve Agenda Item 6.2? Ms. Martinez-Garcia, is there a second? All right, is there any further discussion or questions? I believe we have the Frosts here, is that right, Mr. Frost? If anybody have any other questions of the Frosts?
What is the first name of Mr. Frost?
Trevor.
Are you related to Tanner?
I am. My younger brother.
All right. All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.2, excuse me, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed by like sign? Our motion carries 7-0. All right, we will next move to Agenda Item 6.3. I believe we previously heard citizen comments on Agenda Item 6.3. Ms. Sager?
Agenda Item 6.3 is also a variance to the required separation for a business to obtain a TAVC license. This is for Tipsy's Sports Grill and Bar at 5001 Avenue Q, Suite A. They are within 300 feet of Hodges Elementary and 5001 Avenue P. We did mail Hodges Elementary, well, LISD, a letter on October 13th. Their opposition should be in your backup. The Tipsy's Sports Grill and Bar is requesting a mixed beverage license, a food and beverage certificate, and a mixed beverage late-hours license, although based on the earlier testimony, that late-hours may no longer be necessary. That would allow a business to stay open until 2:00 a.m. This same request has previously come in front of council in January and February of this year, and were denied at both of those. There are two other businesses within the shopping center that have current TAVC licenses. Pub 50 in Suite B has a mixed beverage license, and CC's Grill and Bar at 1605 50th, it's still the same shopping center, also has a mixed beverage license. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Mr. McBrayer?
Restaurants that serve alcohol within the 300 feet, do they get variances?
So CC's Grill and Bar, their TAVC license was issued in 1997. Pub 50, their license was issued in 2015. That doesn't mean that there might have been another restaurant prior to them or a bar in that same location with a different license. Didn't, I don't know for sure if they received a variance from council or not.
And could you identify on that map exactly where they are located?
I cannot on this one, but I'm sure the applicant can.
Could the applicant do that for me, so I could see where that is?
Ms. Madrid? Ms. Madrid, you can come forward.
And just to clarify again, the separation is measured property line to property line because it's the school, which is the reason for the variance request. So where within the shopping center is your suite located? Is it towards the western property line?
I'm more closer to Avenue Q. I'm over there by Walgreens, over here where it says Avenue Q South.
And that's a little portion here?
I'm right here in this corner.
Okay, that's where I thought.
And my door, my original front door, is right behind Walgreens.
Is it face 50th Street or face Avenue Q?
It's facing Avenue Q. Also, there is Goombia right behind me, we're like caddyback together, and they're open till 5:00 in the morning, every Friday and Saturday, and they're just as far as I am from the school. Pub 50 opens at 7:00 sometimes, sometimes at 11:00. CC's opens at 3:00 while school is going, and they've been there for years, almost 30. You have the Party Room, which used to be Old Gloria's, and they're BYOB, so is the Cocoa Palace is BYOB, and sometimes they have gatherings, venues, parties, quinceañeras, weddings, and sometimes they start drinking at 8:00 in the morning. I am like literally the only real restaurant in that shopping center. You come in, I sit you down, we give you chips and salsa, and you can stay as long as you want. My workers are not drinking, selling you alcohol, wearing short shorts. We don't sell anything in a box, we're just a restaurant, literally, we're really just, and I would love to invite you guys, and you guys can come and see. We're really just, I'm just trying to make it, you know, I'm just trying.
What is the seating capacity of your restaurant?
Well, we went from 150 to 78 because the city lost our certificate of occupancy, and so did their landlord, so we had to come to code, and we only sit 78 people.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
Once again, my question is, I mean, it's evident by these photos that this is a restaurant, and, you know, I think we've had issues where we cherry pick and we are supportive of some businesses and not others, and this is a great example of that. You've got a business that is facing Avenue Q, and again, just by looking at these photos, it is clean, it is a restaurant, it's a family business, and you've obviously done your homework. So I don't know, I mean, I understand I'm all about family and children, but it's just hard for me to understand why you're not going to be parallel in hours unless the kids are coming across the street to come and eat at the restaurant during school hours. I mean, I don't understand your resistance. Can you tell me what is the issue? Why are you singling this one business out when all these other ones, which I know are more club bars?
Mary else is going for a variance right now, and with me being, I've been here since 2019. I recognize before that time, we may have not had representation, I can't speak to that. But when I see the name of the facility being Tipsy's Sports Grill and Bar, when I go down 50th Street going to Hodges Elementary School, yes, I do wonder how those got there in the first place, notwithstanding, I'm here to defend the fact that when you leave this place, you can and probably will go off of, onto 50th Street or Avenue P during school hours. We're not saying it's an after-hours business where our kids aren't in session. These kids are in session with bars right across the street, and I was, if I measured door-to-door being 250 at the door, there is a door, there's a big signage that says Tipsy's Bar and Grill facing 50th Street. It's not like it's, I thought the front entrance was there, that's where I measured to, but from property line to property line, Avenue P is your boundary zone, so you're the width of a street going across, so it's not picking on somebody. I've been down here before in the past year to do the same thing.
I understand, but I don't think children, if they see Tipsy's, they're not going to think, oh, my God, we're getting drunk.
Maybe it's just me, I'm not worried about the kids going from one side and saying, hey, a bar, I want to go to, an elementary school kid going over there and taking a seat at the bar. I'm worried about people leaving the bar that are intoxicated, they're adults, that are now going in their car after drinking and crossing Avenue P and 50th when our parents are picking up their kids at school.
But they're not conducting business at those hours.
She said 11:00 to 11:00.
So...
We're in school from 8:00 to 4:00, we have even after-school activities, so we have kids there while the bar is open, yes.
So, but what you said first is that you're making your decision based on the name, so it's more about image.
It's not just the name, no, it's the fact that you have people at a staff.
So why are you having, why do you have no problems with the other restaurants or the other clubs?
This is a variance.
I don't understand that.
I can't object to businesses that are in place. I'm here because there is a variance being asked, we get notification, and from our head, from a board member that expressed interest and told me to come down here, to our superintendent, to our chief operations officer sitting here, but it's not just Rob Nance fighting, this is Lubbock ISD, and the bigger, this is a big picture, this is not the first time I've been down here to do it, and I will be back every time there's one that we're notified for.
Kristin, can I ask you another question?
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you. The variance, there seems to be two different numbers, which is correct?
Which, which, I apologize, which number are you referring to?
The number that Ms. Madrid posted on here was 497?
Yes.
And then these folks said 200 and something? Which is the correct number?
It's property line to property line, so it's definitely less than 300 feet. But if you were to measure door-to-door, which I did not, it could potentially be more.
And then, Ms. Madrid, could you not move that sign so that it's not visible on 50th Street?
What sign?
The one that, that-
Says Tipsy's?
Uh-huh.
Yes. What happened is that that is a side door that was already there, that was the outside door. The front door is right next door to Pub 50. I changed it that way because with the city, there was a problem about parking, so they were asking me, where would you park if you were facing Walgreens? So then Mary Walder, the owner of that whole shopping center, told me, put it this way, that way there won't be a problem, there'll be plenty of parking. But if the name is intimidating, it's like saying, I need to put Jalisco's, Las Palmas, so it has to have a Mexican restaurant name to not intimidate people? We're better than that today because, you know, TAVC called me from Austin and asked me what happened, and I said, well, the city's not giving it to me. And I did go to the school when I was barely painting the building, and I let them know, and the girls, the principal, and everybody was really excited. I went two weeks ago to leave a menu, and I was told to leave, that they weren't allowed to order from us. And even the principal said, oh, I'm so excited, I can't wait, will you bring us burritos? And I said, yeah, I can order you burritos. Like, if CC's is having a big old get-together or the Party Room, they're still closer to the school. If the Party Room rents their venue out for Friday and they start at 8:00 a.m., what is the difference? First, they said it was that it was an unsafe neighborhood, kids couldn't play in the park. Now the gentleman said it was a trash and, you know, whatever else goes on there, that's what he just said, but I'm legit just a restaurant, and this is like, it's ridiculous.
All right.
We have other people getting their variances in their next door to daycares.
All right, thank you, Ms. Madrid. All right, any other questions of Ms. Sager, Ms. Madrid, or Mr. Nance? Any other questions before?
I have a question.
Okay, all right, hold on just a moment before, and remember, we're going to move into discussion if there's further discussion. This is questions for Ms. Sager, Ms. Madrid, Mr. Nance. Dr. Wilson, you were first with your hand up, you may proceed.
Here, okay. Ms. Sager, you mentioned the variances that she's looking for still contains that late-night variance, is that true? That is still on the documentation, however, as she stated earlier, if they're not going to be open until 2:00 in the morning, that would not be necessary. So, but if we pass it today, would that still be viable where she could extend the hours out to bar hours? Or could we amend that and get the late-night? I don't have a problem with the restaurant hours, I would not like to extend it to bar hours. The way it's drafted today includes that permit, you could amend it today in your motion to remove that portion. Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Joy?
Mr. Nance, what are the hours for Y Care at Hodges?
Four to six.
Four to six? Okay, thank you.
All right, there's no other questions for those parties. Ms. Patterson-Harris, do you have another question?
I don't have a question.
Okay.
I'm just waiting on everybody.
All right, low- All right, Lo, well, do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.3? And do I have a second? All right, I have a motion and a second. Now, let's move into discussion, Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you. I, I've been here each of the two other times when this request was made. I make it a pattern, an habit, when there are folks who have concerns about things that, within the district, that I have been chosen to serve. I wasn't on the council, I don't even know if I was even born when some of the stuff went there. But I am here, and along with the staff from LISD, they can't control or change anything that was done in the past. But the best, but as far as things from this point forward, where they have a say-so, I think it is within their right to do so. Likewise, is my stance. I am not against any particular business, but I am concerned when the concerns are voiced with regard to things that are currently in the district. And this school has been tasked with the care of students that make their way to Hodges. So, I just wanted to restate my point. I don't think it's cherry picking, I don't think it's, I can only speak for Sheila, let's put it like that. That I, I won't cherry pick, but I will definitely hear both sides. But when there are individuals who are responsible for some young lives and others, I tend to follow that direction because they've asked me to do so. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. All right. I don't, before I call the questions, can we go ahead and, we have a motion and a second, we'll just go ahead and call for the vote, are we good with that? No. We're just going to move to the vote. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.3, please say aye. All against, please say aye. Aye. All right, let me go ahead and get a head count on that vote, because I didn't hear all the way down at the end.
We voted. We have voted.
Well, I raised, I raised a question, I raised a question, you sort of overruled the question there.
Okay. Mr. Weaver, we had a call for the question.
What is your call on the vote, Mayor, if you could make one?
Well, I don't, I'm hearing three to three at this point. I didn't hear a vote from Dr. Wilson, am I wrong in that?
Okay, if that's the case, then the motion would fail. So, someone that voted against the matter could make a motion to reconsider the matter.
Yeah, we're going to have to start using the voting when we get to these.
If there's no objection, the body can revote. I don't have an objection. If there's no objection, we can revote, make sure that we've got the questions, so there's no questions.
But the real question is whether she can do an amendment after the fact that we have in fact voted.
I don't know that you were recognized formally. If someone that voted against it wants to make a motion to reconsider, that may be your cleanest way to get it back before the body. But if there's no objection, then I would suggest you just revote and make sure everybody-
I don't think we have any objection to making this clear and revoting. I'm not, I'm not quite certain of what the call for an amendment is. Is it a call for an amendment of?
If someone wants to, if y'all are going to proceed with a new motion, it can certainly be amended by a member of the body, as they see appropriate, and then it can be voted on by the body.
If there is an objection to, to a vote, to the vote, as you indicated, does that have to be a 4-3, 3-3?
That's just a majority vote.
And does it have to be done by people who actually voted the first time?
Are you making a point of order? Are you making, you're questioning a call of the chair, is what you're really doing.
Yeah.
Right, that, that can be brought by anyone to question the call of the chair.
Well, we had a call for the question, we didn't vote on that, we moved directly to the vote. So, I would propose, we go back to the vote and take a vote on the original 6.3 Agenda Item.
Yes.
So, do we need a motion for an amendment to amend?
I would suggest you start over, get a, get a motion and a second, and then take any amendments that may be brought at that time.
All right, well, let's go back and strike, if that's okay with everybody, because I think it's going to be a moot point at the end. But if it's 6.3, do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.3? I have a motion to approve and a second by Mr. McBrayer. And then we move to discussion. Is there anyone that would like to bring an amendment? All right, Mr. McBrayer, is yours button showing up? All right, Dr. Wilson.
So, I would like to move to amend the variance that she is asking for, to remove the late-night hour request. So, she must comply within restaurant hours and not bar hours.
All right, we have a motion to amend and a second. All in favor of approv, yes? Go ahead, Chad.
Consistent with that amendment, that you are amending the number two in your resolution where there's a list of the different permits. I believe Dr. Wilson is attempting to remove number two in the list of 1, 2, 3, et cetera, if that makes it clear for everybody. That would be your cleanup on the resolution. We would, if this passes, we would remove the number two.
Is that clear?
Yes.
Becky, is that clear? All right. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.3 as amended? We're going to make it very clear and go person by person. Please say aye. So, that would be Dr. Wilson, Ms. Martinez-Garcia, and Mr. McBrayer, is that correct? All against, please say aye. Aye. That would be Ms. Patterson-Harris, Ms. Joy, myself, and Mr. Massengill. Is that correct? So, the amendment fails. So, now we will be moved to 6.3. And that fails. Right, that's what I was about to move to. All right, so all in favor of approving Agenda Item 6.3 as presented, please say aye. All right, that is Mr. McBrayer, Ms. Martinez-Garcia, and Dr. Wilson. All against, please say aye. Aye. That would be Mr. Massengill, Ms. Joy, Ms. Patterson-Harris, and myself. All right, 6.3 fails, 4-3. All right, we will next move to Agenda Item 6.4. This is the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute municipal services agreement for Red Kennon Development. And I would just point out to council that this is an agreement to move forward with services. This is not an actual annexation that we're doing here today, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, Ms. Sager.
This is a municipal service plan agreement for a proposal to annex 17.33 acres located west of Quaker Avenue, north of Woodrow Road. If this agreement is approved, we will bring the request for annexation in front of council at a later date. This municipal service plan agreement just lays out the services that will be provided to this property by the city. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, does anybody have any questions of Ms. Sager on 6.4? Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Corner, right across from where that little store is. Is that right?
I don't think there's a store, this is the corner, so northwest of this is where the new Cooper High School is going.
Oh, well, okay, 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 I got you now, okay, it's a little bit, it's further down, okay, never mind, thank you.
Dr. Wilson.
Ms. Sager, so does this make the city 100% responsible for paving Quaker?
Not necessarily. I would have to look at what was drafted in the agreement by our Public Works and Engineering Department, and they might be able to answer those questions.
Mr. Atkinson, do you have any on that?
I do not, Mayor. Mr. Keenum, do you, can you answer that question for us?
Dr. Wilson, has it stumped you? I've never seen you speechless.
There's never, I'll let Mike explain.
So, the question was, does this make us 100% responsible for paving the entirety of Quaker? Is that what the ask is?
No, just from that portion where we're being, where it's going to be annexed in, which is a formal, very formal section of land.
Right. Well, I mean- That's county. I think the annexation would be including the entire right-of-way of the street, is that correct, Kristin? Yeah, so it'd get all the way to the east right-of-way edge. So, I mean, ultimately, yes, it would be our responsibility. I can't remember if we put a requirement for the developer to put in a portion of Quaker there, because sometimes for voluntary annexation, we will.
And I think that's what I was asking, is a developer, somebody getting helpless?
So, yes, for our agreement, we said that they would be required to put a two-lane paved section in with the, with the annexation.
Perfect, thank you.
Ms. Joy.
I think if you look at Little XI Street Services.
Oh, you're looking at the service agreement?
I'm looking at the service agreement, because it spells it, spells it out.
That's what we were looking at, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that newly annexed areas adjacent to or bordering unpaved arterial streets will require a two-lane section of roadway to be built along with the development with interconnectivity to adjacent paved arterial streets. So, I assume the developer is agreeing to do that.
That's correct.
Okay. I think that answers the question.
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
And would that mean that they would receive credit for impact fees?
Yes, they would get offsets, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, okay. I'm just trying to really get in the groove of this impact fee stuff, so I'm trying to-
Right, so for the offsets, they have to build it to the full arterial pavement section. So, if they did something less than that, they would not get offsets.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keenum. And again, just another reminder, we're not approving the annexation, we're just moving forward and proving the services agreement for this to be further along down the road. So, any other questions of Ms. Sager, Mr. Keenum? All right, may I have a motion, is there a- Thank you, Mr. Massengill, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Joy. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.4, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, by like sign. Our motion to approve 6.4 carries 7-0. And with that, it is 2:53 on November 1st, and we will be adjourned.